We have myself, Michael Mel helping us. John First is here, our village attorney, Laura Bozzi. I see Eric. And I see John Martin. So we have a we have a full board for what we're doing tonight. So I'll start the meeting. My name is Donald McDonald. I'm the acting chair of the Village of Cold Spring zoning board of appeals, acting chair for this one application only. It's the application of Sam Bro of Garrison, New York, in order to permit construction of a single family dwelling and a substandard lot. We have had four public hearings on the matter. We closed the public hearing the last meeting, which was August 6, 2020. So tonight is our first night to begin our deliberations. The board has not talked among ourselves about the application at all. So I thought that it would be good for us to begin to go through the record, which is pretty extensive and a lot of effort went into the record in terms of creating it. And I thought it would be a good idea for us to go through the record to make sure that we we understand it. And also by going through it, as we go through it, it'll start to generate comments. And I think that would be the my parting words on it, that we would, don't be afraid to jump in, make a comment, ask a question. It's just for us to start to get, you know, our heads around, you know, how we're going to go on this thing. Anybody have any thing they want to say on that matter? Okay with this idea of going this way?
Yes.
All right. So I thought we would start out with the, it's the booklet that was made, the presentation for variances, which basically gives us the slideshow and lecture that we had on the opening night of the hearing. And I'm not, I don't think we should go through every single word and page of it necessarily, but we should go through it. So that we, you know, it's a good way for us to understand what they're asking for and their reasoning for why the variances requested to be granted. We all, we're all familiar where it is in the village. I don't think we have to go there. But I think that where they start is, I thought on page seven and eight, where they're starting to talk about area nonconforming lots and how many there are in the village. Because as we all know, one of the base issues of this project is the fact that we have a nonconforming lot. The lot is smaller than the zoning code would allow for a buildable lot. It's called nonconforming. There are some other issues with that in terms of the status of the lot in terms of legality, but for that, we'll sidecar that for a second and just talk about the applicant's basic, one of their basic tenets of the presentation was about how many, how typical this lot is in the village relating to when you look at how many substandard lots there are in the village. And they spent a lot of their, their effort, their time going through that. So we should review that just so we're, you know, all on the same page about what they're trying to say. We know that the property is located in the local and historic district. It's an R1 zone, which is the single family zone district. Let's see, on page 10, I highlighted on page 10, I highlighted the entire sentence, the entire statement. The zoning board of appeals is probably not accustomed to having the village, having village history play a role in their considerations, but the history of this lot is essential. In this instance, to understand why Sam purchased the property, why our firm is involved, our firm being Siegler Henderson, namely Paul Henderson, who made, made this booklet and did the initial presentation. Why we are, why we think it is important for the HDRB, that's the village's historic district review board and the ZBA to review the project in tandem. And who, and most critically, why two variances in particular are being sought to preserve the historic architectonic relationship between the structures of at 36 Pine and 21 Parsonage. 36 Pine being Sarah Garland's house, which is, used to be the dominant house. And this was the associated barn accessory going into it. Sam, the Sam Bro, the applicant, has stated that he purchased the property because he fell in love with the structure's history, iconic design and anomalous nature. I think I'm pronouncing that right. All of which make the barn special and worth preserving. While most people interested in purchasing the barn want to tear it down and build something new, Sam saw it as an opportunity to honor the history of the building by building a reverent, quote, "memory building," unquote, in its place that preserves all of the notable characteristics of the barn, its position, size, roof, pitch and stark simplicity. The design team firmly believes that accessory structures play a key, if typically overlooked, role in preserving historical fabric. So this is kind of the, 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 kind of the back, the bedrock background for, where the applicant's positioned. And then they proceed to start on, they talk about the history. And the next pages, you know, you've got primary structures. They give us, they give us some examples of early structures. There was pattern books made for these outbuildings. Some interesting photographs from the village and some quotes. Basically trying to make the point, because secondary structures make important contributions to a site and the district helping to interpret it how an entire site was used historically, their retention and preservation should be strongly considered. And I'm quite sure that this language is backed up by the village's historic review board in their comments. Next page is, you're talking about the history of how accessory buildings were developed in the village. I'm going to skip over that for now. I thought page 17 for me is very interesting because page 17 of the, it shows the the what the title page, one of the, the credits page to the zoning code that we have now, that has been amended since, but still the guts of the zoning code. And I think that's interesting to remember because the code as presently conceived is is questioned in this application strongly, heavily. And it's important to know that the code did come from people that were as earnest and hardworking as the applicant and his consultants. And it's interesting to note that James J. Early was the mayor, and I think that that is Marie Early's dad. And that Francis Leahy was a trustee and Francis Leahy lives right up the street from me. So these are people that are highly respected. They did not, even though we talk about the zoning code being a, you know, some subdivision code that the village copied from some other municipality and forced it on the village. I I question that it was that. I think that these were serious people and they conceived of a code that they felt was best for the village. It's a debatable point, but it's something to remember. Let's see. On page 19, if you have ever read the code, you will be well aware of the divide between the dimensional requirements of the 1967 code and the built reality of the majority of the lots in the historic districts, in the historic district. This is the reason we see the need for a close working relationship between ZBA and HDRB on this particular project. And then the, in the ensuing pages, they they talk about their, their mapping of the prevalent, the historic, the accessory structures in the village and document how many there are. Basically making the point that it's part of our history. Yes, a lot of them have been destroyed, a lot of them have been changed into other things. But we should, if we can, respect them. Let's see. 21, only three, three historical accessory structures remain in the immediate area of 21 Parsonage. The date before 1912, the barn being, this barn being one of them, I'm sure, well, that'd be the fourth one. And that barn has been there ever since I've been, it's been there a long time. It's a, it's a fixture of the neighborhood, no question about it. They do understand, they, they took, they note the condition of the barn and they note that, you know, that in any rehabilitation of the barn, it's likely that what you see, the materials that you see will go away. And, but they do give us a photo of the mortise and tenon frame on the inside of the building and that that likely would be preserved in the new, in the reconstructed building. Page 24 becomes an extremely important page, I think, in the application. They say, they show us a photo of the barn and, or the barn stable and the 21, and the its original principal dwelling house. And they note the space between the two buildings is equal in importance to the buildings themselves. The structures are almost as far away from each other as possible to still be on the same original lot. They speculate and attempt to keep the stable smell and flies away from the house store. It used to be a store at one point, you know, who knows? It might've been because they wanted to maximize the use of their property and they pushed the buildings to the edges to have open area in between. But they, they do spend a significant amount of time in the presentation trying, talking about the relationship between the two buildings and how historically it would be very important from a historic point of view to maintain that relationship. And they do, in subsequent pages, go through a number of alternate plans showing the relocated structure in the middle, you know, it within those setbacks and one other alternate location, and they give us reasons, we can go through that, why they, they feel they, they don't, they, they, they they destroy the, the relationship, the spatial relationship between the two buildings. I think, let's see, let's see. And they give us, you know, they give us the drawings for the proposed new, new structure. And then I think I pick, for me, it picks up at 31 and 32. They show us again the photo of the relationship between the two buildings and they say, to reiterate, the structure was built as an accessory building. Once the lot was divided by the previous owner, it became a principal building on its own lot. Whereas from an historic perspective, in this current location, it continues to read as an accessory structure, the 36 Pine. So that leads us to an interesting discussion point, which would be, on the one hand, you have a relationship, you had, you previously had one lot with a principal building and then an accessory building. And then the lot is divided and sold. So now you have, instead of one lot, you've got two lots effectively. And you have two owners, two different owners. But by the same token, the hope is to maintain the original relationship between the buildings. So that is, that becomes the, kind of one of the nuts of our problem here in terms of how you balance that, that, that desire, that, that need against the 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 transition of a previously unoccupied building into actual dwelling unit with people, with cars on the site, with windows, with doors, with patios. So that becomes, and that was a lot of discussion from the public in the hearings was, how do, you know, when does that, when does that connection, when is that connection broken? Or can it be broken? Or, you know, how do you break it? Or does it break when you have that, that change? And, because let's face it, there is a change proposed. There, there is definitely a change proposed in terms of the status of the, what is now an unoccupied barn. Next page, locating the new structure in the same location of the existing lot will preserve that relationship. Again, it's, it's going back to the, the relationship which we've been talking about. Then they get into the, the, the very detailed study they have done about basically what are the status of the size of the lots in the village of Cold Spring when it relates, as it relates to the zoning code. And they show us a number of maps that show lots that, the first one we see on page 34 in the green are all the areas of lots that, that conform, that those lots are 7,500 square feet or more. And I think later on, they, they tell us that that makes up 48% of the lots in the village. Then the next page is on page 36, they show us let's see, 35 is what, this map shows the area conforming lots, area of nonconforming lots in dark green with the village of Cold Spring. So the dark green lots are the nonconforming. And they're super, then they're, they're, they're placed in amongst the lighter green conforming. And on the next page, they show, they tell us that that's 583, there are 500, there are a total of 583 residential lots in Cold Spring. 303 or 52% are area of nonconforming. Meaning there are less than 7,500 square feet in area. The one thing that occurs to me when I read that and I think back to the the men and women who, who made their, I guess it was all men who made the original zoning code, that it is true, 52% of the lots are nonconforming. But they may well have concluded that, well, 48% conforming is a substantial number. And we prefer that to the 52%. So our code is going to favor that. Do I know that that's true? No. But it's, it's a point that could be, could be raised. The whole, the point of the, 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 the background of why they're talking about the size of lots is because two of the variances, at least two of them, the basic variances go to, you know, they didn't even, they don't, the variances don't even get to the building. They're just talking about the size of a lot. And that they need, the ZBA has to approve those two variances before we even get to, you know, where the, where a building may be placed on the lot and what that would require. And, and so that gets into the lot width. And it gets into the 50 foot, the, 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 the need of a, of a 50 by 50 foot square within the lot. And I think there's, and the square foot, it's the basic area of lot, the area is 3,360 square feet, where 7,500 is required. So it's, it's, it's less area than is what we're, what is required. It's narrower than what's required. And you cannot get a 50 by 50 foot, foot square in that lot. So those are three bedrock variances, which is why they're going through all this. And they're basically trying to say, this lot is, is, is not that atypical when you look at the lots in the village. Then they start to get into setbacks. They get into front yard, but the, the, you might remember in, in, I think it was the second or third hearing, they they amended the, the request and they they moved the, the structure enough so that it meets side yard requirements for small, narrow lots. So that side yard variance went away. And they are going to align the front with the other fronts on the street. And so the code does allow that to, to happen without, without a variance. And they also added one more car to the parking. And so that took away the, the parking issue. And in your packets, I see, I saw that there were two site plans given you and you could, you'll take the one with one car on it and just throw in the trash can. And you should just use the one with two cars on it. And that has the, that's the latest site plan that we're dealing with. So front, we don't, I'm, I don't even want to really waste time now on front yard setback. You know, and side yard. I, I, you know, but those have gone away. Parking issues are going away in the sense that we're not, there is no, you know, that they're going to, they're going to house the cars on this, on the lot. Our issues really have to deal with the, the ones I just went through, the, the bedrock deal, issues of the, the lot itself. And there would, yeah, the front goes, yeah, those, those go away. So it would just be those.
Donald?
Yeah.
Did you just say earlier that in the revised application, the side yard setback had been, was now conforming?
Yeah.
I think in, looking at the memo of February 11th from the applicant, he says, I've increased the north yard setback to 7.5 feet.
Right.
So there is still a variance needed on that side of 2.5 feet?
Well, I, I think that he can, that he can use the
Oh, the small lot exception?
Exactly. And that's a seven and a half foot side setback.
Right.
So I don't see that as a an issue. We'd have to prove out the other side, but he's got 24 feet there. There's an inch thing you have got to do, but I don't think that that is, I don't, that, I think that will prove out okay. I think really what you're talking about here is the, the bedrock issues of the lot size itself. You know, I can't, I would go through the math of the, the, the other side yard, which I'll, but I'm not going to do it right now. But I will do it after the meeting. But I'm, I'm very sure that it'll prove out. I don't think that's going to be an issue. So I think what we're, what we're looking at is the lot size itself. And what issues are created by that? They take, they take great pains in the, I'm losing something here. I don't see. Okay. They make, they take great pains to, to, to document lot sizes in the village. And that they are in the 52% group that of existing lots that are nonconforming. And they I'll skip to page 80 on, in their booklet. To borrow one of the many relevant quotes of the comprehensive plan, from the comprehensive plan adopted by the village of trustees on January 10, 2012, 1.15 recommendation, adopt minimum and maximum standards for setbacks and lot width that support narrow lots, thereby continuing small town character for new development. And that reflect more closely the existing village setbacks and lot widths, including the prevailing setback of existing buildings. Well, the prevailing setback of existing buildings is already in the code. Lot widths is an issue. Existing village setbacks are an issue as well in terms of side yards and rear yards, especially side yards. This, this statement gets to a little, it gets very quickly to what Eric and I were talking about. When you go through the voluminous documentation about the number of nonconforming lots in the village, that it, it was a, it struck me as, and I, and I know Eric, and Eric, if I'm mischaracterizing what you're saying, what you said, please chime in. But it, 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 it went to, well, you read it, you go, yeah, this is a great piece of work that the code update committee should read. And then they should go to work and change the zoning code so that the village, so that the ZBA doesn't have to do it by just granting, by granting variances. I think in this case, the distinguishing characteristic, and we should talk about this, is the distinguishing characteristic, they would say for this lot is the historic nature of the building. And so, and I, HDRB backs them up on that and they're, you know, they're, when we refer to the, HDRB gave us comments and they, they talk about the, the historic nature of the accessory building. And so if this was a something that was judged not to be historic, and this was the same application, but the building was not judged to be historic, how would we, would we deal with that? And then if we
It's eight o'clock.
And we had, we had extensive discussion about precedent, uh, especially after talking about, you know, well, this, this document looks like the perfect document to go and light the fire under code update committee and have them, you know, change the code. If we, uh, said that you, that this lot was, um, was acceptable to develop as a single-family residence, as proposed, or even not as proposed, let's just take house proposed out of it, just the size of it, uh, and the location of it. You know, um, is that a, um, is that going to, uh, uh, create a stampede of, uh, people saying, well, I've got way more square footers than I need, way above seven thousand five hundred. And, um, I got three kids to put through college. And, um, I'm gonna, um, carve off a piece, you know, and this, you know, and, and see if I can get a, um, a, um, a variance from CBA. And, and to not make things more complicated, but I will, um, we're sitting on a, a lot that, um, in a way, it, it's, uh, we, we, it's been established that, um, that it was one lot in the beginning of nineteen eighty-four. And by the end of nineteen eighty-four, it had been, it had been, it had been divided in a private, you know, not in front of a planning board, but it had been divided, by drawing a line and doing legal descriptions. And then one, then, then the, one of the, uh, the pieces, the, the barn piece was, um, was transferred to, um, you know, the daughter of the, the owner of the other lot. But it, it never went through a subdivision process. So it, um, it never, um, it never got what it needed to become a buildable lot. The village code, when they enacted it in nineteen sixty-seven, they said, the code said, basically, after this code's adopted, you're not gonna be able to put buildings on these, on these small lots anymore. But we will give you a grace period. And they gave him a grace period, I think it was six months. And after that, it was over. So, um, one of the questions that rolls around in my mind, and it's, it's a, it's a layman's question. You know, you take what happened in nineteen eighty-four and everybody on, on the ZBA village planning board, side of the table would say, well, that's interesting what you did, but you did not make a buildable lot. And, um, and, um, what has changed between then and now? We've had, you know, twenty, how many years? A lot of years. But what has really changed? I don't think, you know, and I don't think in, in, in a sense of that transaction, anything's changed. So do we, does, 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 um, you know, what effect, um, are we having? If we granted, um, if we, if we, um, basically, you know, created a, a lot by a, kind of an immaculate subdivision process, that's what it would be. So, um, John, first, you have any comments on that?
I'm going to bed. I'm tired.
Yeah, I mean, so the fact that it's illegal, I, I think we covered this before. I don't think it necessarily, um, precludes the applicant from making the application and requesting it, but I think it's something you've got to consider when you apply the five factors.
Right. Right. Eric, where are you on this in terms of what we discussed that day in terms of the, um, the, the, the precedent setting in terms of, where we both went on that?
I'm, I struggle with a lot of the, um, a lot of the issues here. I went back and read, um, the New York State pamphlet on, um, the, um, how the, um, responsibilities of ZBAs. And I was struck by the, um, the, the bedrock, um, description in New York state law governing our activity is that we are supposed to balance the, um, benefit, the potential benefit to the applicant against potential harms to the community, to the health, welfare, and so on of the community. And the way I read this case is, um, on the one hand, there is potentially enormous benefit to the applicant. If we, you know, approve the application, then a, a lot that they thought was, that they bought, a, a lot that had previously been thought to be unbuildable suddenly acquires immensely more value because it's now buildable. On the other hand, um, the potential harms to the community I see as real, but less. I feel like the, the benefit to the applicant is, is greater than the harms that we've heard about, um, for the community. So that seems, but then, but then I consider that, um, what, what about, in this case, the applicants have, um, created the situation, like they have, um, gone into a, a, an unbuildable, a, a lot, thought to be unbuildable and, um, sort of, um, stake their flag there and created the situation in which they're getting the benefits. So that it's not like, it's not an innocent, the, the situation did not arise innocently.
Right.
And I'm worried how that, you know, how we're supposed to regard, um, a situation that comes about that way.
Right. So Eric, that's a, that's a very good question. So, um, so the five factors that you look at, and you kind of talked about at the end, where you take those five factors and then you balance them between the, the benefits to the applicant, to the detriment to the community. So one of the five factors, uh, they talk about whether the harm is, is self-created. Uh, and this, I think that's kind of what you're alluding to, the fact that, you know, the applicant kind of, and, and in most cases, honestly, there's probably ninety percent of all variance applications are self-created, probably ninety-five percent. So for an area variance, um, just because the, 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 the issue is self-created, it doesn't necessarily preclude, um, the board members from still finding in favor of the applicant. This is just general law. This is nothing special. Uh, and you probably guys are all a little bit familiar with this. So, so the self-created difficulty is just one of five factors. So when that factor, um, you know, that would be weighed against the applicant, but you still have four other factors to consider. And it all depends on the board's feelings. So some board members may weigh, um, some factors more heavily, uh, like the community character impacts or the environmental, physical impacts. May place greater weight to those than the other factors. So a lot of times the self-created, especially with an area variance, um, it's, it's usually the minimize a lot. But again, each board is different, each application's different. So, you know, some board members may weigh heavily on that. Some may not, but at the end of the day, uh, no matter which way you side, it's only one of five factors to consider.
Well, another of the factors we have to consider is substantial, is the, is the request substantial. And, um, it seems to me that the request is substantial. Uh, you're going from the required seven thousand five hundred square feet to three thousand, three hundred and sixty square feet. The, the lot is, um, forty-eight feet wide. The code asks for seventy-five feet wide. And you could say, well, half lots in the village are, are in that, you know, are, are, are not exact as small as that, but a lot of them are, are, are less than those that required. But then, when you, when I look at the site plan, to me, the site plan, when I think of what's gonna happen to the girlins, this is Sarah Girlin and her husband. I think this, this shows an example of why they said we want bigger lots than three thousand, three hundred and sixty square feet to house a house and two cars. I think it's a, it's a, a, a very good example of it. Not to say that there aren't examples like this in the village, but, you know, that does not necessarily make, just because you have an example of that, doesn't necessarily make it right. And it doesn't necessarily make it that, that the people that are next door to it, um, are hunky-dory and happy with it. So, um,
Right. And Chairman, that's, that's a very good point because, um, you know, as far as substantially, you could, you could have a situation where the variance request is substantial, but maybe it doesn't necessarily impact the community character or the environment. Or you can have an application where the request is not substantial, but it still impacts the community character and the, and, and the surrounding environment. So your point is well-taken, is that it is substantial. And the reason is, is because it, it kind of shows it's such a great community impact. And that kind of emphasizes the substantial ability.
Substantial, really, love it, right.
How substantial it is.
So, so that,
I think,
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, well, first I'll just say sorry that I've come in and out. I have some internet issues, so hopefully this will work. Um, I think that there's a piece there too that some, in a lot of these lots, they have had houses on them for a long time. And so when you come to buy a house and you see that there are other houses that are close by, you kind of know what you're getting, essentially. I think it, and, um, something that I have heard from neighbors, including the neighbor right next door, was the understanding that it wasn't a buildable lot. And so I think that people were making, if they're making their purchase decisions in the neighborhood, it was with an expectation that it wasn't a buildable lot. And so perhaps if they, if someone were buying a property right nearby, they wouldn't have weighed the fact that they would have a very small lot very close by. They would say, you know, it was with the understanding that it, um, that it wasn't going to be inhabited. So I think that that is one that we should consider when thinking about the, the impact in, in the neighborhood. And maybe I will add, I think it's fair in, in terms of the, um, self-created. You know, I, I, I believe once Sam said, like, he understood it as being a buildable lot. I mean, I think that that, I think that this was a, um, a situation that he didn't anticipate.
Is that what he said?
But, but I also, yes, that was my, that's my recollection. But I also think that probably with maybe different kinds of digging, as we have done in this process, it became pretty clear that there were a lot of concerns that would come out. So ju- just to say, like, I don't think that this was, um, done in a way that was, um, trying to kind of like, I think it was, it was done with good intent of, of, of belief that it was possible. And I think that we have just uncovered with some knowledge of, perhaps, you know, knowledge of code and, and some history have found all of these issues.
Right.
Right. Yeah, I think what you're kind of saying, there was a good faith, um, effort by the applicant. But, um, I guess you had to dig a little deeper to really find out the history here. And that's when everything was kind of uncovered, oh, wait a second, you know,
Yeah.
illegal stuff, there, there is no planning board approval.
Yeah. I mean, that, that was my kind of read of it.
Yeah, everybody was, whenever it was involved, everyone was referring to the planning board approval, planning board. And, you know, so we finally, you know, we, we researched the records and said, no, there's no planning board approval here.
One thing I did notice in the record was, um, Sarah Girlin, uh, she inquired, and I don't know whether she did it, she did it in the year that she, I think, bought her property. Uh, I don't know whether it was before or after, but she inquired of the building inspector about that lot, the status of it. And he did say to her that, um, it did not meet what was required to be buildable. But at the bottom of his, um, of his, um, his, his memo back to her in bold print, he says, be aware that the applicant, that the owner could always ask for variances. So, so I know that she knows that, that they, you know, she lives beside, she's always known, she lives beside a lot, that somebody could ask for variances. Now, yes, they're big ass variances, but, you know, um, is still, you don't, it, it wasn't quite as, um,
It's eight fifteen.
solid as this, this, this lot is unbuildable forever, you know?
Yeah.
There's no, whatever.
That's true. Are, unbuildable isn't really, it's not really a thing.
Right.
Right? It's, it's, it's defined by what, what is allowable through variances, essentially. And so, um, so this is, this was a, it's unbuildable without variances. And the question is, was the assumption that the variances were so great that no one would, would be able to achieve it? Or, um, or, or could you? And maybe that's the crux of it.
Right. Let me see. I'm, I'm gonna, I'm trying to look for my, uh, I had it right out here. I'm trying to find my, uh, five things that we have to, have to, um, get my list. I'll, I'm gonna move it for a second to find it. Here it is. Okay. So, um, self-creation, with the benefit sought by the applicant, be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. I don't see it.
Only, uh, a less, fewer variances by placing the building in the middle of the lot, but still that does require some variances.
But he's still got the, the, the big bedrock variances of, of the lot size itself. And there's no going around that unless he made a deal with neighbors and said, bought up, you know, and, and tried to acquire more land to make seven thousand five hundred square feet.
If the, if the barn were salvageable, right, if, if, if it were just improving the barn rather than rebuilding it, the variances wouldn't be required, right? Like a, if it were in the same footprint and it was the same building, is that correct?
Same, same use. He would just need, maybe a building permit.
Wait, wait, wait.
Same use. But if it's not a barn, if it's a house.
Oh, if it was a house now.
So then it,
Oh, if it was a house?
It'd be needing, Eric.
But no, I mean, if it, if it's the same, if it were this barn and it's considered, so then, but, so you could build it, but it would need to be considered a house, you would need them like a use variance or a use change?
I'm confused. Are you,
Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying if he wanted to, um, fix up the barn, he wouldn't need any variances as long as it was within the same footprint. Um, and in fact, the setbacks were probably different because it's an accessory structure. And, um, I don't even know if the lot size would really matter because it's definitely a pre-existing non-conformity as far as the garage use.
But that, that, that understanding would be that it would remain as its current use, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. So then, in order to have it in the use that he, that is the benefit sought, um, and that it's essentially not salvageable, then,
Right.
it's kind of nowhere around it.
Right. The benefit sought is to make it a habitable dwelling, a single-family residence.
Yeah.
And, and, um, that's where he needs the variances for the lot size itself. So that, that is, um, there's no, the, the only way to, to, and it's been done before, you know, that, um, that an applicant will, uh, get a no, and then they will acquire land, you know, they'll make a, they'll, you know, they'll, they'll find in a lucky circumstance that a neighbor has more land than they need to maintain their lot size, their legal lot size, and they don't need that land. And the other person is desperate and they'll pay big money for that land. So they'll make a deal and they'll expand. And so that's a feasible way for them to at least get closer to, you know, going, instead of asking for a fifty percent, size of variance, they would go to a, you know, like a, a, a ten percent variance or something like that. But in this instance, um, I, I'm, But in this instance, I, I'm, I'm quite sure that, that the neighbors don't have extra land to, to sell, nor would, nor they want to. So I think that that essentially, there is, there is no other feasible way for the applicant to move other than to come to DVA. That the requested variance will create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. So that's, that's good, that gets into two, so you're talking about, one is the neighborhood, and the second is nearby properties. And that, that, and we, and I think that I could say, from what I can see, that it is definitely going to be a detriment to, or be perceived as a detriment to the people that own adjacent properties, especially the corner of Pine. And I think that the other neighbors in the, you know, in that immediate area all stated in the public hearing that they felt that it would be a detriment to their properties in their neighborhood. Whether we, how we treat that, that's going to be each individual board member in terms of how they do their balancing. I, I personally, I react very strongly when I see the two cars so close to the building on Pine Street. I know that if I lived there and I had that, I would be really, really, really upset, I'd be very upset. I know, I'm just talking about myself, you know, other people might have other, you know. The proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood of the district. So I think that, those, those, the undesirable change in character of the neighborhood or nearby properties, an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood of the district, that's where, I think where the, the hard part is on this, on this application. I think the other ones are pretty straightforward. Everybody's got to decide, you know, how they balance substantial. You know, I remember, I thought about it after this last one we did, that I tend to, that I've always kind of tended to equally balance them all. And, and when I kind of thought about what I had done in the past, I realize now that I would, I wouldn't be afraid to rebalance, to say, this one, this one is a big one for me, and it's going to count for 80% of my decision, it's my perfect right. So I wouldn't, I would, I wouldn't just make it a scorecard and go, you know, there are five things here, you know, and tie, you know, each one is weighted equal. Every board member should think about how they might want to weigh those. John Martin, what comments do you have?
On, on this particular element?
John?
Yeah, on this element, on this element, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Yeah. We're referencing to the detriment to the neighborhood, is that where we're at, at this point?
Well, we're, yeah, I guess we're, yeah, we're a detriment of the neighborhood and the whole thing about neighborhood and environment and undesirable changes.
Well, what I, what I look at in general, you know, is, you know, we've heard that the neighbors, I mean, there's been neighbors for and against. The ones closest to the property are against, the ones adjacent. And they would be the ones who would be most impacted. There might have been an idea in their mind that the lot might not be buildable. I mean, as it existed as a barn, the neighbors actually testified to that idea. Although they did make inquiry, one of them did, as you mentioned, to the
Building Inspector.
Building Inspector, and was told that potentially variances could be sought. So I mean, as far as, you know, detriment, I think having a property of that size occupied by a family, you know, as you mentioned, with the cars nearby and the thinking of the immediate neighbors, that this was likely a piece of property. And that would be on the assumption that they had purchased, you know, before the code, or, you know, even after the code. Say they purchased after the code and they would assume, oh, the code is in effect is substantial. Still, you know, five factors apply. So their thinking is just sort of a factor on it. And it's just a balancing thing that I think I've got to resolve. Like you said, it's the toughest part. We've also discussed that there was a good faith, perhaps mistake on the part of the applicant to to, to, to purchase the property, which was potentially going to need substantial variances, but there was no guarantee they would not be granted. The other, the other question comes whether or not the applicant might have gone to the planning board first to find out if it was buildable or made an inquiry there. You know, of course, we, from a lot of digging, we found out there was a legal action that concerned this piece of property, where I think a prior attorney had bought it and felt like they were, you know, sort of swindled in the purchase. So maybe even that person, an attorney, was mistaken. I think that's the way it went, you know, unless it was the attorney who did the selling. Just remember, there was a legal matter out there, we discussed. And, you know, it's not an easy issue, it's complicated. You do have to listen to the neighbors, I think. You look at the surrounding properties and you take into consideration that, you know, yes, there are a lot of non-conforming lots, perhaps 52% is specified by the applicant, and with substantial research behind that. But at the same time, very few of no homes or developed residences were pointed out, you know, post the code, that were on, you know, properties of this size, if at all. I mean, I, I would only simply say, I just don't remember hearing anything of, with the substantial area coverage issue where a residence was built on that kind of a property post the code in 1967, even though.
They gave us, they gave us a, and I, and I, in our packet, I couldn't find it. But I saw it and I thought it was supposed to be copied. They gave us a list of properties that were basically that same size in the village. And there were a number of them, a substantial number of them. We don't know the status of them. Did you find that list? Did you get that list? Because it didn't show up in.
I think I have it, I think I have it.
Yeah.
It's, I found it in my old papers. What I, what I have here is just, they're all Constitution Drive and White Hill Place.
Right.
And there's a number of them, and then there are two, four, six, eight that are highlighted, that are after 1967. And they're all in the, they're all in the seventies, like, early seventies.
Are the dimensions pointed out on those properties by chance? The dimensions of the lot?
Yeah, yeah, not that I, it has the deed book, deed page, text ID, sale date, names, no.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that would be, because there is the question of like, okay, so it's under 7,500 feet, but like, how far under? I suppose.
Well, they've already, they've already shown very clearly that 52% of the lots in the village, residential lots in the village are less than 7,500 square feet. And they showed there were, I think there were 100 lots in and around this size in the village, there were a lot of them.
This side, like in the 3,500?
I had that, that document in the packet to be copied, and I don't see it in the copies that I got back. And I don't think you guys got it. So I'm gonna, I didn't discover that till about two hours ago. So I'm gonna go back, I'm gonna check back with the village in terms of what happened, where is that? Because that was a, I remember looking at it and going, that's important for everybody to have.
Yeah.
But let me go back to, to I've wrestled with this, because, you know, we're all human beings. And Sam is an earnest, earnest, you can, you can see, he's an earnest guy. He's not, you know, he says he's not a developer, but he is acting like a developer, but he's not your typical developer. And I, and I have total sympathy for the situation that guy's in. And I want to have sympathy for it, but I, but in terms of the, you know, buying something and, you know, and we could potentially, you know, put him in a horrible place to be, weighs on me as a human being, big time. But we have to, as John, John Martin reminds me, as an attorney, you know, ignorance of the law is no excuse. And, you know, when you buy a piece of land, you, you do some digging. And it didn't, it doesn't seem to me it took butch digging in the village of Cold Spring to find out that this lot had issues. So I am steeling myself, and I have to do that, to take that issue out of the equation in terms of what we are, what we're trying to decide here.
I think, Donald, what applies there with what you're saying is simply, if he did his due diligence, he could have found out that he needed to get variances. And so what that does, what that does, you know, so it currently is not a buildable lot, or it didn't get planning board, but, you know, could get variances. And so then it brings us back to the weighing of all the factors.
Right, right. So, so, you know, he very well could have said, okay, well, I'm gonna see if I can go get the variances because I have a very strong vision, and I think that, you know, you know, he probably felt, oh, well, you know, I've got a good case here. And so.
But still an application, it's still an application, nothing's a guarantee, it's still an application, that's all.
On the question of detriment, I'd just like to ask what the board members see as the potential detriment to the neighborhood, aside from what the neighbors have told us. In your own views, how would you define the, the potential detriments?
I've been thinking about that going through this because, so one of the things that we've heard is that, it's essentially that it adds density, right? It's a, it's a property that has been vacant, that now will have people that will, you know, that will be lived in, and that that adds, and that I think that that's considered detriment. And.
Well, there's a point, density is good, there is an argument that it's good, that we've heard.
Yeah, that's true, we've heard that, yep, yep, we've heard that of like, you know, it's kind of, having a vacant lot is not a good. It's nice to see something animated and cared for. Yeah, yeah, that's true.
And I would add that the applicants have given us, we've not discussed their own response to this question. They have made a very strong and lengthy argument against the detriment position. They, they have said, in fact, that the development will be a benefit, and that that argument rests on the notion of historic preservation. Through, through an argument of historic preservation, they say that this development, far from being a detriment, it will actually be a benefit to the neighborhood. So we haven't discussed that at all, is that argument persuasive to any of the board members?
Well, the way, the way I come down on it, if we were going to make a, leave the barn as it was, then I could see the historic argument. But the minute you take that building, which is there now, and you tear it down, and even if you recreate the mortise and tenon frame, it's on the inside of the building, so you're not going to see it from the outside. And you put windows in the building, you put doors in the building, to me, the historic nature of what was there goes away, okay? Now, I understand that they're leaving the shape of it, and they're leaving the, the the placement of it, essentially the placement of it where it was. But I think that, I just don't buy the HDRB argument that somehow you can do all this to that structure, and that it's still, you know, has this aura of historic, I just don't see it. I don't, I just don't buy it, I don't buy it, I don't buy it.
I, I agree with you, Donald, and I would go even farther and say that the project result, will result in a loss of historic integrity. The minute you turn, convert that lot into a residential lot, add a driveway, whether it has cars in it or not, it's still a driveway, but if it has two cars, even more so. You've totally changed the character, the historic character of that corner, that little corner of the neighborhood. And these orphan lots like this are a feature, they're historic feature themselves. The fact that a lot like this was left over, that's a result of a historic process that is as legible as a building. And it's not a problem that needs solution. It's a, it's a legitimate part of our history, and they're dotted all over the village, they're part of the fabric of the village. And they even have benefits, they, they are breathing space in the streetscape, they provide greenery. And that's, that's going to be diminished when there's a patio and a driveway. So to me, that is one of the key detriments to the neighborhood, is a loss of historic integrity resulting from the domestication of this orphan lot. However, I wouldn't argue that that's a huge detriment, but I do think it's a real detriment. To me, that's one of the main, that is the main detriment to the neighbors.
I think the historic argument is essentially creating a monument, that's sort of a, right, this is recreating it with a sort of representation rather than the, the exact preservation of an existing building and.
They call it a memory, a memory squabble.
Yeah, you know, so it's, I mean, I'm not gonna try to give an example of, but you can imagine, you know, we've seen monuments of this, of this type that are meant to remind you of something that was there, but it's not meant to be an exact replica. And that, I guess for me, a lot of, sort of what the building, a lot of that feels like a lot of it is around aesthetics of like, does someone find that beautiful or meaningful? And something that I feel like there, I would rather not on that, there are other factors that I think, for me, way more heavily than to decide what is an appropriate historical representation of something like.
We don't know.
But I, but I think that that's the argument. What's up? Say again?
We almost don't need to go there, to decide this application.
Yeah, I think so too, yeah, I think so too.
Well, I think it goes to the issues of detriment or not detriment, and the fact that the argument was made to link it to an historic, tectonic relationship with the corner property which it used to be united with prior to the subdivision. But as, I think you look at it objectively with the proposed plans, to ask yourself, if you're looking at it, and would you, would you perceive a historic, you know, element to the, to the property? I, I just don't, I think it's complicated by the, like, mentioned by Eric, by the development, family moving in, changing sort of the character in the surrounding area. So, to me, the argument of the historic relationship and trying to sustain that and carry it forward, I don't necessarily, I don't find that it, it's promoted by the plan, that's my feeling. But, you know, as to detriment, I mean, if the idea is that we don't want to lose historic fabric, um, I question whether that's really, uh, a detriment, that, that's going to become a detriment. That's my feeling, but go ahead. Uh, I'll, I can finish up another time on this.
Finish up.
No, I, I just feel as though it, it losing, losing, I, I just don't think we're losing anything by the development in a sense, uh, the, the historic fabric, which was the argument made to preserve it and to have the plan go forward. I just don't see that as a persuasive argument.
I think they made, they made the argument, mo-, the most of the historic argument was made for, to buttress the idea of leaving the building where it was, not putting it in the middle of the lot where you didn't have any area variances. By moving it as they have slightly, they've taken the, they've taken those side yard and front yard area variances out of the equation. So I don't know, um, that that whole historic thing, um, how much they really need that anymore. And, um, because you're really talking about the, the actual size of a lot itself. And in a way you could say that in 1984, when the Vatanzes cut the lot and, cut the lot and, and orphaned off the barn, that's when the link with history started to be broken, uh, because then they just threw it out there. They detached it from the main house and they, they, um, and then, uh, the sister sold it for good money to, to, to somebody. And, um, you know, uh, she, she, you know, they expected it to be built on or whatever, you know, uh, so I, I think that, um, I think that the, one of the reasons why we have so few original accessory buildings is number one, they rot and fall apart. But number two, you know, they, uh, they get renovated, they get built into other things, they get changed. What started out as a barn becomes a house. And when it becomes a house, you know, it's not going to be quite so darn historic is what, um, as, as, um, everybody would like. So I, I do think from the historic point of view in terms of the neighborhood, it's a detriment. How I'm going to weigh that, not as big as the substantiality argument, but I'll, I'll weigh it.
I have a question that's is fairly related. Um, so, uh, so it was historically used as a garage. Um, and now it's, now through this change, it would be used as a house. But, um, is it that it doesn't have to have any kind of, that there's no use variance or something like that? Because it's going through this process that kind of moves it into this new category. Is that correct?
If we grant the variances, we're effectively saying that you can, you can, the use can be a residential, a, a habitable dwelling.
Right. The, the, the single family dwellings are, are permitted use in the subject zoning district. So, um, the use is permitted as per the code. The problem is the lot size and the setbacks are not conforming to the code.
Okay. And, and when it is a garage, those, those things don't, those, um, restrictions don't apply, is what you were saying earlier, John? That doesn't actually matter as much.
Yeah, the garage is a pre-existing.
Go ahead.
The garage use on that property's probably would be considered a pre-existing, uh, use. But you could certainly have, it's certainly an accessory to a residential use. And then the building is what it is. I mean, it, the building's probably non-conforming, but that's certainly a pre-existing non-conforming.
I think that the, the, the shift in use is a, um, that's a big change. And it's something that, um, is kind of inherent in us granting the variance. And to me, that is, um, you know, it, it, it's kind of, for me, that, that's an important factor that is embedded in our weighting. Um, is that it, it, it is changing its use. It's not, it was never used as a, as a residence before and now it will be.
John, if, John first, our attorney, if we, if we take the historic issues out of this equation, okay? And we're simply talking about basically the size of a lot, okay? How do we distinguish this from other properties? Uh, how do we make this unique? Uh, if you, if you're not really talking about a, a building anymore, uh, you're talking about the size of a lot. You have somebody who's coming in and basically saying, the lot's thirty-three under square feet. You know, um, I, I want to develop it. Um, there are a lot of lots in the village that are less than the seventy-five hundred square feet. There's a certain number which are even as small as mine. Um, you know, um, why, if we, if we granted a variance for him to, to do this project, how could we distinguish that from anybody else?
Uh, well, I think.
The historic thing used to be, oh, well, why the historic barn on the, you know, we're trying to save the old barn. But if we, you know, if we, uh, don't buy that argument and, and we're, you know, how do you, how do you, um, how do you distinguish this?
Right. So I, I think there's a slight distinction with the barn in the sense that there is a use on the property. It's not a completely vacant property with all wood. So I guess I would say some sort of use is better than no use. Yes, the change from the barn to the single family is, is, is big. But I think the fact that there is a pre-existing structure, even though it's not a single family home, could, um, you know, is a distinguishing factor.
Okay.
And the fact that this lot is pre-existing, although illegally created, but it's been this way since nineteen eighty-four. So what is that, almost thirty-five years, thirty-something years? So, you know, the other argument is if, if, what if people with larger lots try to then, to start subdividing them? You know, go to the planning board and then say, all right, well, I'll just get a variance just like you gave the other property a twenty-one parsonage. So I, I think this is distinguishing because this is a pre-existing lot and it's been around for thirty-plus years. And you're not creating this lot. You're just trying to figure out if you think it's big enough to put a house on it.
Well, that's where the, um, that's where the time element comes in that I was talking about from nineteen eighty-four. And on the one hand, they will, nothing's really changed between nineteen eighty-four and now. But, um, you're saying that there is a, that that thirty-five years of time has a certain element to it in terms of a weight, in terms of a decision.
Yeah, I would say is distinguished, it would certainly weigh heavily in distinguishing it from somebody in the future trying to subdivide a larger lot to create a, a smaller lot. You're not creating this lot. You're just trying to figure out, um, if it's, if it's big enough to put a house on it.
Okay.
What if they just subdivide it and let it go for thirty years and then start making an application? But again, there was no, there would be no barn or use on it. So.
Correct. Well, they wouldn't be able to subdivide it until they get the variances. So, you know, they would have to go to the Z B A before the planning board would approve it.
And also the, uh, the land records will no longer file privately subdivided lots, correct? From what we.
Right, yes. So they'd have to go before the planning board and they would, essentially they would have to show a lot on it because you can't, you know, it's, it's fair enough for the planning board to ask, well, you're subdividing this, what are you doing with this lot? You know, it's, it's, it's fair for the planning board to, to assume that they're going to be putting a single family home on it.
Have, um, have property owners of similarly sized properties come before the Z B A and ask to make an addition to their house? In your, I, I didn't review any past minutes or anything, but has that, has that, does that kind of thing come up?
Not sure what your question is.
A bulk, uh, like a bulk issue where, uh, an addition sought to be added to a house made, you know, in, in relation to the land was a substantial portion of the land.
The reason I'm at, yeah, I mean, well, no, it's, I guess it's not actually a bu-, well, and may, maybe this doesn't apply. I just have been thinking of, um, how has the Z B A treated these other small lots in the past? And, and most of these are grandfathered, right? But it kind of, the, the question of them renews when they come for another variance, if they're going to make a change to the house. So I was curious if, if in your time on the Z B A, you've seen, you've seen any of those? And I was curious how they've been treated. You know, if that's not relevant here, that, that's fine, but I'm just trying to understand how the Z B A has historically treated these, these particularly small lots.
We had, um, one, um, very small lot, um, on Academy Street. It was as small as this, um, but it was an existing house. And, um, there was a rear, I think the issue was a rear addition. And, um, the, it was a very, um, you know, you're talking, they were talking about, you know, like a five foot, six foot addition. It was not huge at all, very, very minimal. And it could, it had to be because it was such a small lot. And, um, the circumstances were that where the addition was going to be placed, it wouldn't affect, um, anybody. It was a lot of open area, uh, but in another, in the rear of another lot that this backed up to. So it was one of those circumstances where, you know, we could say, well, you know, um, this isn't hurting, the, the neighborhood's not even going to know this happened. So that was an easy one. If it had been, uh, a different circumstance where it had been, that addition had been on a, on, on a, instead of the rear, had been on one side, that would have been a really hard call. Another one I, that I can think of had that situation and we just, uh, we said no. And, um, we pointed out that they had a lot of space on the other side of their house to build an addition. And it turned out that, uh, when they redid it, they redid the design, they actually realized that it was a better way to go. So.
But a distinction between the question and, you know, and what we have here is we're talking about homes that were already built and occupied by residents. Whereas that's not so much the case here. So it's a, it, it, it's a bigger change. You, you, you don't have people living next door on the current property. And, but, but the idea of whether or not development will affect others is what I think you're driving at. If the property is too small or I guess here it, you're looking to add a residential occupants to a location that. I mean, if it's a distinction at all, that's all, I think, your question.
Well, I think that one especially gets to one of the balancing factors of, does it detriment, is it a detriment to the neighborhood? But I guess, but I don't know if that gets to the substantial question of, is this a substantial? Is, is granting a variance to the lot size substantial? I guess that's where I was.
But that, uh, that's substantial because the, you're, you're not talking about, um, okay, we had a case, um, five years ago, um, uh, a, a subdivision of a lot. And the lot was, um, uh, three or four feet less in width than it had to be. But it was no more than three feet. It was very close. And, um, and, uh, that variance was granted. It was, you know, uh, it was very, very small request. This is a, what, fifty percent, at least fifty percent, uh, request. And that's substantial. So this is the first one that, in, to my knowledge, that I've seen, I'm sure, I know it is, uh, that I've seen, that is, this, this, this is a big, big request. And the applicant knows it. I mean, it's all, you know, this is a big, big ask. For me, the, 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 you know, I could see how you might have a small lot like this with a small house like it is. But when you start putting cars on it, on the lot too, that's when it falls apart for me. So I, I have, I have a real hard time. Just, you know, I have a very hard time, um, seeing how you pack all that on to this small lot. And, and I would say that that's precisely what the people that wrote the zoning code, um, when they set that lot size. Yeah, maybe you could say that lot size is too big, but this I think is a clear example of something that's too small if you're trying to get two cars and a, and a small house on it. That's what that's, you know, and I, I think it, it shows when you put the cars on there, you look how close it is to the neighbor's property. And yes, there, I, I've seen them, there are lots of neighborhood properties in the village where you've got cars very close to the neighbor's house. It doesn't make it right. So, um, that's my big stumbling block on this. I'm for, I'm all for smaller lot sizes in the village. Uh, and I regret my, um, my, um, full disclosure. I was on code update committee when we reviewed the lot sizes in the village and we left them as they were. And I think it was a huge mistake and I've let the village know that. I, you know, I think that we should reduce the lot sizes, but I think that thirty-three hundred square feet for cars, two cars and a house is, um, is a detriment to the, certainly a detriment to the adjoining properties. And, um, you know, if I, and, and maybe a lesser detriment to the neighborhood. Um, and even if I decided for myself, it was not a detriment to the neighborhood, I couldn't live with myself if I thought I would, if I poisoned, um, the, um, the experience of, um, of, of a neighbor by an action that, um, that I, that I was involved with. So, and I think I, in my, in my book, I would be doing that. So I'm not trying to sway anybody else on this board. I'm just trying to bear my soul and see if we can get the, just keep the discussion going and, um, see where we go with it.
Let me ask about the front yard, uh, variance issue. Uh, why do you see that is not substantial? It's because the house was built close enough or for the way it's set back, it meets pretty much what the other houses have.
Yeah, what they're, what they're proposing now is they're going to be, they're going to match the existing setbacks, front yard setbacks on the street. And, um, and the.
Which is.
A code will do that.
Page forty, the presentation sort of indicates that, correct?
Uh, yeah, probably.
In their revised proposal, they changed that.
They did, yeah.
The revised proposal, they changed it so that, that's what they're doing. They changed to, to, um, so the front yard setback issue goes away.
I don't know why you say that because the, the revised setback will be five point one six feet.
Where's that?
Isn't that on their chart, um, of the revised, revised numbers? Um, I have increased, this is again, February eleventh. I have increased the front yard setback to five point one six feet, reducing the variance. So he does not eliminate the variance, he reduces it.
Well, I think the way I've heard him, what I heard was he was trying to reduce the overall amount of variances he was requesting because the planning board was saying to him, get the number of variances down. And when I look at his plan here, he is, he's showing a, he's showing an approximate line of the, of the, of the house next door. And he's drawing it across and he's saying, I'm aligning. Now, I'm assuming that he's going to show us how the other, you know, he'll meet that other part of the code about, um, you know, within two hundred feet on other side. I suspect he will. Um, and I think that, I, as I understood it, that's what he was talking about.
Yeah, I, I, I look at, uh, the page forty on the presentation.
Yeah.
And there are front yard setback, uh.
It's nine o'clock.
Markers in there for feet in which the homes are set back on that block.
Yeah.
And let's see, I mean, if you, if you see it as I do, it's on page 40.
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
There, there, there are varying degrees of setback, but they appear to be, I don't know, averaging in the neighborhood of about 15 feet or 11 feet. Somewhere in that vicinity.
Okay, all right.
Do you, do you see, do you see that overview shot?
I see it, okay.
So, you know, it, it's not explained.
But he's aligned, he's aligning to the, to the, to the side of the Pine Street building.
Correct.
But he, but that necess, does not necessarily meet the, he, he's not going to do it on the other side. He's not going to meet the 50, what the average is on the other side.
Which typically what we do, we look at the average really, not just one property. Typically, typically, I mean, it's objectively to see what the community overall character is with regards to setbacks.
Right, so then there's, there's a, you know, there's going to be a 5.16 minus what? There's going to be a, there's going to be a front yard variance then.
19.84 feet is the variant, the new variance requested.
All right, there you go. So that's it, okay.
So just, just looking at some of the evidence that's in the record, I'm not sure that it immediately just goes away. I think it's, I think there's something to be considered. My, my estimation with regards
What goes away? What, what are you saying doesn't go?
I mean, as far as whether or not the front yard setback issue is really something that's not a driving factor in the overall consideration as we balance everything out, you know?
Yes. I, I, I know what you're saying.
I mean, I agree on the side yards. We got a narrow lot. And you need 16 feet for a 48 foot and you have 30, I think. So the side yard setbacks are, are, are obviated. I mean, they're, they're met on a narrow lot, you know, exception to the statute. So, so I agree on that. The, the front yard, I just don't see as sort of something we don't have to consider. I think, I think it's something that we
Yeah, we do. I, I made a mistake. I, I I've been trying, I've been trying to deal with a lot of stuff on this and I, I
No, 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 I get it.
I blew that.
You've been doing a great presentation tonight and I, you know, I'm grateful for that.
We have a, we have a front yard setback issue. There's no question about it. We do. So we don't have a side yard issue. But we do have a front yard issue.
And we don't have a parking issue, as you said. Those two, no side yard, no parking issues.
Right, right.
Isn't, um, are there people looking at this? That is in red and black and white from 211, I think had referenced.
Yeah, that's part of the, that's actually a very good part of the application.
Yeah, and, and so there is a side yard variance sought, but it's 2.5 feet.
I think that's the original. He changed it. So that was, that, what you're reading was done in the beginning of this process.
This is February 11th.
That is the new one.
Oh, that's a new one?
And it, and it has a cross, it crosses out the parking variance. So, I mean, it's not a huge, compared to everything else, it's two and a half feet on the side, I think.
Okay.
Yep, so, so he proposes to move the house seven and a half feet south by reducing the, the previously requested side yard variance by six feet. And the requested variance is therefore two and a half feet and there's no variance required on the south side. So it's a small, small request on one side.
Yeah, my understanding is the provision 13417 is something that simply says, you know, you need, you, you, you take four inches per foot. And you add that up and I think that comes out to 16 feet that you need to satisfy, if I'm correct. And, and it has to be somehow divided between the two sides, you know, you have to come up with it by a combination of the two sides, whatever the set, side yard setbacks are, have to equal 16 feet.
So he's got more than enough because he's got 24 feet on one side. And he has seven and a half feet on the other.
Yeah, what is the provision there? Do you have the code right there? Is it 130?
Don, are you talking about the small lot exception?
That's right.
Okay. It's the first time we've mentioned that in regard to this property, isn't it? Tonight?
Yeah, I, I don't remember we've mentioned it, but you know, the fact is that it's there.
I don't think the applicant even requested that exception or is it, it was not part of the application.
But didn't we decide, was that something that was part of, that you only got if you're grandfathered? Did that come up?
Oh, oh, wait a minute. That, we can't do that. No, that's right. They can't do this because that the, the, the lots has to be owned single and separately or something like that. And that's right. And we, that's right. And we went through it. We realized they can't, they can't use the small and exception.
Because it's not a pre-existing legal
Right.
enforcement.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
That's right.
There you go.
That's it. So, so they have a, they've got this side yard issue. They've got to go, yeah, two and a half feet side yard variance. And they've got a 19.14 foot front yard variance. So I'm sorry, I blew that. I'm sorry. We got two. We had a side yard and a front yard.
Gosh, Donald.
Plus we have the, the, the lot size itself. But I don't know, it's like the bigger issues are the squeezing of what the code is requiring for a habit, you know, a single family residence to, you know, two car per spacing, two cars, two car spaces, two parking spaces. And I, you know, this is America. We, you know, most people, you know, they cannot do without their cars. And most people want to have their cars on, on their property. And, you know, that's that's not, that's not a, that's not a, some crazy rule. I can't understand why it's in the code. So it's something that we should be, we should, we should, we have to respect one way or the other.
Well, let, let me raise something hypothetically, and I, I raised the, raised this several meetings ago. And I'm not sure that I, I, I haven't lost interest in the idea. To me, the application is much more palatable with no parking on the lot, no driveway. And I know, now, the board, the ZBA is mandated to minimize variances, but it's, the language in the, in the law says at the same time to preserve neighborhood character as much as possible. Those are two mandates. And they don't always work together. Sometimes they work against each other. You have to choose one or the other. And if you uphold one, you downgrade the other and vice versa. And I think that's the case here. To me, adding the two parking spaces seriously, for one thing, it's, most of all, it seriously degrades the neighbor at 36 Pine. And it also reduces the historic virtues of this lot as a, as an open orphan lot. It removes it further from its historical identity. So to me, by eliminating the parking, you solve those problems, you eliminate those problems. And it's true, then you create another variance, but I think we're gaining something that, that is also important that the ZBA is required to support when possible.
We appeared to have lost Donald.
Eric, I, I agree with you. And I think it's also worth noting that it wasn't a variance that was requested at the beginning. And so it seems like it was done as maybe a concession to reduce the number of variances, but it wasn't something. We could decide that that's not one that is worth following the argument that you made. It's better, that, that's a variance better to grant than, than to, to avoid granting. I, I see your point.
Well, it was done at a consideration that being adding the second space to lessen the variance requests. The other considerations were the immediacy of the property to the the end of the street. The corner, I, I, I think I recollect, you know, I mean, it's where the parking would occur and there was some discussion regarding parking in the area. And whether that would just increase lack of visibility for those on that particular street. From my, from my recollection, but I'm not sure if the parking issue is really, you know, in itself, the, the, maybe in a bundle of discussing, discussing these variances. I don't think it's the controlling one in my mindset, but I mean, there were on off discussions and varying statements made with regards to on-street parking, off-street parking. The ability, the, the ability of people across the street, whoever was living there at the time to get across, to back out of the driveway or turn. I, I just remember it was a back and forth discussion.
I remember that as well. I'm sorry, my computer died and then I, I was gone for about a couple of minutes here, but I, I think, I didn't
We were talking about the parking spaces, Donald.
Right, okay, that's where I left off. Okay, all right.
And Eric was suggesting that perhaps it would have been, you know, better, you know, even if the applicant asked for no parking, it would make the property less developed. Even though it increased the number of variances that were requesting. We went back and
It would reduce detriment to the, to the neighbor at 36 Pine Street.
Right. Right. Well, I think that the way the process works is that we would, if we thought that, if we, if we of the board concluded that the application as, as requested, as stated, we couldn't, you know, the, the cars put it over, put it to where we can't, we just can't approve it, we would just deny it. And we, they get some comfort in our discussion. And then they could choose to come back. You know, with another request that may or may not be granted. I don't think we want that it was proper for us to get into a, into a, and John, first, you could, you could, you could help me out on this. But I don't think it's proper for us to get into a, into a design charrette with the applicant to make it better or make it more palatable to us. I don't think that, planning board might do stuff like that, but ZBA, in my experience, we don't do things like that.
Um, I mean, if it's something that's going to minimize the community character impacts or the detriment to the neighboring properties, then yes. And I, I think their design is to try to keep it as close as possible to look like the existing garage. Obviously, there's going to be some changes with windows and doors. So I think that's kind of part of their, their argument why they should get the variances because their design is in keeping with the existing garage as much as possible.
We're allowed to impose conditions, so why couldn't this be a condition?
The, the, the condition to what? To have a
A condition of, of honor approval would be no parking on the, on the, on the lot.
Yeah, because you would essentially, I mean, you, you would have to, you'd have to approve, you'd have to approve a variance to allow a single family home without any off-street parking. So that would be a separate variance and then
The variance hasn't been requested.
Well, he, they're requested, I guess, what did they request? They requested a variance to have one off-street parking when
No.
required.
No, no, that now they, they revise the application to, they show two cars. Because planning board, you know, is urging them to, well, forget about that, but they're, 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 they revise their application. They have two parking spaces on the lot. So there's no variance requested for parking.
Well, I have, in the notice, I think the notice says to permit one off-street parking space when two are required.
Right, that was the original notice.
Right. So I, I guess belt and suspenders is technically, you may not be able to grant and allow them to have no off-street parking because the notice doesn't say it. However, in the notice, at least the notice that I prepared, you know, I have to make sure this is the final notice. It does say in the bottom, and I always put this in, this is the zoning board of appeals will consider such other further relief as it finds necessary. So I think the zoning board can then, based upon that sentence, you know, if you feel like it's necessary in order to minimize the community character impacts, to grant them a variance so that they're, they don't have to do any off-street parking spaces, then I think you can do that.
All right. So my question is, if we did something like that, how do we distinguish that action from another person who comes and says, well, I don't want to have any parking spaces on my lot?
Right, so you're saying in this
I know that the world beats us up because we think about precedent, but we think about precedent, so.
Right. That, that's not if some, that's not an unreasonable request and we could consider it, consider the facts in each case then.
Yeah, it's a case by case basis. So I guess, and I'm just hypothetically, the argument is, in this specific instance, especially considering that 36 Pine Street literally has no backyard. You're saying in this instance, we're okay with no off-street parking spaces due to the fact that if we did require the parking, you know, the cars will be parked in their kitchen for 36 Pine Street. You know, I'm just
Right, no, that's, that's
penalizing.
That's what I'd say. That's what I'd say. Well, for me personally, I have to think on all this. That's a, it's, I'm not, I'm not ready to go and, for myself and go and make a bound, for myself, make a balancing statement where I come out approving the project with no, with no parking. So, but I want to think about it. And you know, I don't know, how does everybody else, you know, I don't feel like we have to make a decision tonight. I think this is a, personally, I think it's a big, this is a big, I think there's a, this, there was a hot, I think that this project has high stakes on both sides and I think I'd like to spend some time thinking about the discussion we've had tonight. Anybody else on the board have any opinion on that matter? Am I, is my
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yep, we just lost Eric.
I know, I
What do you think, Laura? Do you, do you think about this?
For our decision. What's the deadline for our decision under the statute?
October sometime.
60 days, 62 days, maybe? I don't know. Let's say 60. I think, I'm not sure if it's 60 or 62.
From the closing of the public hearing?
Yeah.
Yes, so that would be, what was that, August 6th? So what do you look on, early October?
Yeah, early October.
You can always, I mean, technically you could, you can ask the applicant for more time. If he agrees to it, he can extend it. Quite honestly, even if you don't issue a decision within 62 days, there's really nothing he can do. I know we don't want to drag this on any further. There's really nothing he can do. I know we don't want to drag this on any further, but. There's no default approval provisions in the zoning code, and I don't think it's in your local code. But I'm assuming, you know, you guys want to. You don't want, we don't want to drag this on any further, but, you know, I'm sure if you needed an extra week or so, you know, we could probably get it.
Well, I'm, all I'm saying is that I I'd like a couple of weeks to think about the discussion we've had. And I think I'd be prepared to make a decision at our next meeting, but. I don't think, I don't think I'm ready to go one way or the other right now. But, you know. If the rest of the board wanted to jump in and make a decision right now, well, okay, I'll go along, I'll, you know, I can make it work. So I'm just trying to find out where everybody is.
Well, one thing to do is maybe start going through. You know, possibly the criteria, and if we sort of get stuck and we just feel like we do need more time, if it becomes obvious. Otherwise, if we just start going through the criteria, we find out. Whether we're, you know, we find the rationalizations that we need. So I. I don't know, what is, what are the other board members think?
That's a good idea to me, to quickly, just let's quickly go through them and see if there's a. A strong leaning one way or the other.
I'm okay with that.
All right. So you kind of want to go through a dry run, test run, so to speak.
Yeah, yeah, see what, see, you know. So we'll start with the first criteria.
All right, do you want me to read it? I'll read it. It's whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood. Or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by granting the area variances.
Well, I'll I'll start then, say that I think there will be a moderate degree of detriments. The worst detriment will be to thirty-six Pine. Which has no no backyard, but's right on the property. There's a lesser detriment in terms of loss of historical integrity that I described before, through the conversion of a. Of a open lot into a residential lot. And then third, there's a minor, there'll be a minor detriment to other residents on on the lot, on the on the street due to increased traffic. Greater sense of congestion. And so on. But altogether, I I think that's it is, it's simply a moderate level of detriment.
Eric, are you talking about this with the car parking or without the car parking?
Even even without the car parking.
Even with.
Although that helps, that does help a lot.
So I believe that there would be detriment, it is you mentioned to the nearby properties and as to the. You know, from having listened to the neighbors, but at the same time, looking at the size of the lot. That virtually it'll be, you know, obviously a change in use from a stable. Unused to a residence. There'll be a lot more activity. It would have been reasonable on the part of the neighbors to probably assume, you know, considering the size of the lot, that it might not be developed. So it does change and impacts the community and neighborhood. I believe the house will be. Closer to the front. You know, as as opposed to most of the other neighboring properties on that block. So it won't necessarily be consistent with the the layout. Of the lots on that street, that being the front yard. And the, you know, you you do have the issues of the side lot, you know. Sideyard variances. And. You know, of to a smaller extent, the the width of the property. Which becomes a little bit more problematic is was just discussed with regards to whether or not parking would be on-site or off-site. Or just one parking space. I I just think it, in my opinion, it changes the character of the community. To to turn it from what was a barn use and which is no longer existing. To a different, really a different type of use. And again, it 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 sort of as Eric had mentioned, and I feel. Some in in the direction he was talking of, that it sort of. Eliminates some of historic fabric of the way the property currently exists. Rather than, you know, preserves it. So anyway, that's my opinion.
I. We heard neighbors in both directions. Some liked that it would be a more animated property, and so. So I I think it's worth noting that that. The neighbors are, that some neighbors feel like it's not a detriment and some do. But but I agree with Eric that. That there is a stronger impact on the direct neighbors, and we did hear from them that it would impact them, and I think it's not just. The neighbors at Pine, it's also the neighbors on. The other side on Personage where it's very close. And and where there's a variance sought. And. And and I think that what compounds that impact is that it's this change, is that it's a change of use. To a an occupied dwelling, and so I think that that. It's it's. It's not just the building construction, it's also the use that that weighs this more heavily for me.
I think I would also add that there was never really any public. Statement with regards to the planning board on whether or not this would be a buildable lot. I mean, I I, you know, again, it's not a big issue, I mean, it it's sort of a tangential issue, but the fact that when we talk about detriment. The zoning board is almost acting in part as the planning board by if we grant variances, so. Normally, there's, we have, we're dealing with a lot that was. Pre-existing non-conforming or conforming. So I think the detriment is that we're dealing with a difficult lot. And and that's so happens to be sitting in this particular neighborhood. Anyway, that that's another thought I had on it.
You guys ready for the next factor?
Yeah.
Okay. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue. Other than the area variances.
I think we already, we already talked about that. At least I did, I, you know, that in terms of the, they can't acquire property to make the variances lesser or go away. They have to have the. The the lot width and lot size and fifty-foot square variances to even talk about putting. Achieve their goal, which is. Having a single-family residence. So I I don't see how they they have any other way of doing this and to achieve their ends.
I agree.
Okay, I will move on to number three. Whether the requested area variances are substantial, I think we kind of talked about that as well.
Well, you know, the the lot, the lot size is a is a is a substantial, you know, fifty percent. You know. Asking for variance fifty percent from the required code. The front yard nineteen point four foot variance from the twenty-five required, that's very substantial. Two and a half foot side yard from the required ten. That's. You know, modest. What else? The fifty-foot square thing is modest, in my opinion. If we were to. Grant them a two-car variance, that would be a very substantial variance. So there, I think in my book, there are, there are a number of very, very substantial variances requested for this property. And. It gives, that gives me pause.
Is the minimum lot width required fifty feet, correct?
Right.
Okay, so that that's why that would be.
That that one's insubstantial, the fifty feet from forty-eight feet, that's.
I I I agree with you, so I agree with all your points.
Wait, I think it's.
I thought it was seventy-five.
Yeah, seventy-five feet.
Oh, seventy-five, sorry, yeah. Forty-eight from seventy-five, so that's. Right, yeah. What kind of gets me in this whole situation is we're in this situation where we have this stupid lot, which was made. You know, basically, you can call it illegally, whatever, it's there, it's been there for thirty-five years. And it's kicking around, and now serious money isn't spent on it, so. No matter, if we deny everything, the problem is not going to go away. That's that's something that weighs on me, that this problem's not going to go away, that the neighborhood has to understand that. With the amount of money that's already been spent on acquiring this lot. That there is going to be, there's going to be people, they're, they're going to keep coming back, there's going to be legal action, they're going to be keep coming back. For asking, figure out another way to, you know, occupy this lot. And I I don't know, I don't know the end of it, I don't know the solution to it. One thing that scares me about, and I talked about this in the beginning, was a house this small. With no parking. Is a a feast of, it's like a annuity of a variance request into the future, as far as the eye can see. I I can see him now, and. That. That that weighs on me, I I, you know, do we want to get into, do we want to get into something like that? You know, buying into the idea that that in America, you can have a lot. You know, with no parking on it, and you can have a itty-bitty little house with one bedroom. You know, I mean, we all, we all on the board have been, you know, what do we do? Our, the meat and potatoes is, I've got a growing family and I bought this house and, you know, how the hell can I have this one bedroom? And I need a little bedroom, and I'm going to, you know, put a thing in the back here, and, you know, I mean. I I I think John first would say, well, Donald, you're not supposed to think about those kind of stuff, you're just supposed to stay within the force points of the application.
Read my mind.
All right, thank you.
What what do Laura and Eric have to say with the substantial variance issues for the various requests for variances?
I think there's, it's substantial, they are, they altogether and individually are substantial.
Yeah, I agree. And and to me, that's. This way, and this one is a is a ways let weighs heavily in the balance, I feel like this is, this is a really big ask.
Okay, we go to the next element, right?
Sure, whether the proposed variances will have an adverse effect or impact. On the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district.
I don't see much of an impact of that sort.
Yeah, so this would be like stormwater issues or.
Increased traffic.
Traffic, exactly, I I guess maybe visual.
Yeah, I I think it would have. Some impacts with regards to more activity on a small lot, close to a corner, a four-corner area. You know, if there's off-street parking, then, you know. Cars and kids moving about, park cars and. So I mean, I think there's going to be some, there is going to be an impact. I mean, as to environmental, I I don't see it, I don't think we've necessarily discussed it, it's a small lot. I guess there, my assumption is that there's going to be gutters on it, even though it's trying to conform with what the old structure looked like, and I'm. I'm seeing a gutter on the. Depiction of the as-built structure, so. I I don't see environmental, but I see impacts with greater activity as a residence as opposed to a stable.
I think for environmental, it's worth noting that it's not actually over the lot coverage, right? So it's not like the whole lot then becomes paved over or covered in in a building. I think that that. That lessens the impact, and I also think that, you know, it's not like it's a new property that's going into. The middle of the woods where then all of the the power lines have to go in, you know, it's already a developed neighborhood with all of that infrastructure there, it's just one more. One more property that's being added to the that existing infrastructure, so in in my mind, it doesn't, there's not. Substantial. There's, there's not a substantial adverse impact.
What do you say, Donald?
How do you define the neighborhood?
Um. I guess I've been thinking of the. The street that the, you know, the street and the cross street.
Right.
Um.
Right. Yeah, I I I I agree, I think that. I think, well, I think that if you have a lot like this, that's been unoccupied for. Well, way more than thirty-five years, it's never been occupied in that neighborhood. And so if you introduce. A habitable dwelling and the activities associated with it, that's going to be a big change, especially in the neighborhood. But especially for the adjoining properties and the people across the street. But. Then the question would be, well, okay, it's a big change, but people get used to change and, you know, and so is it, is it an acceptable change? And. I think I could see it as an acceptable change, but I can't, but I don't see, but I, where I, and I've already said it, where I, where I. Where I can't go along anymore is when you start introducing the the parking spaces on the lot. Because I think that that is, that 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 doesn't not, that the parking spaces on the lot do not affect. The neighborhood, but they do affect, well, they, well, on the lot, they don't affect the neighborhood, but they affect, they they absolutely completely affect. The adjoining property. If you say, well, we're not going to put the parking spaces on the property, you're going to put them on the street. It does affect the neighborhood because, okay, you've got two less parking spaces, and you also, people have talked about. The potential of having a, you know, a backup issue from across the street, but I have a feeling those streets are so darn wide that I I don't think that, I can't imagine this can be an issue. Because it is legal to park on that street, so. And they also have shown, you know, that at this point in the neighborhood's development, there's, looks like there's plenty of parking on the street. So I guess I would say that the impact on the neighborhood is, 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 will be short-term, big, long-term, little.
Okay, the last factor, number five, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which consideration shall be relevant to the decision, but shall not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variances.
On this one, I would like to clarify something I said earlier, which I didn't express well. I think there is self-created, and then there is self-created. We've never talked before, but there is really two different levels of self-creation that you can imagine. I mean, typically, somebody lives in a house, they own the house, they live there, and they need, and they, eventually, they need to change something. They need an addition or something to, for, for a reason. And that's, so that's self-created, but this is a whole different level. A property was purchased that clearly did not conform to zoning. And, and, and the immediate plan is to build a residence there. So that is like, there's a certain audacity there, that is, it's self-created on steroids. I mean, it's a real asking for a lot, and so I think if we simply answer yes to this, we're not getting up, we have to record the extent to which it is an audacious form of self-creation.
Eric said it perfectly, I thought, for me, I agree with him.
I agree as well. You know, while we spoke about how much due diligence was, you know, really necessary. One thing that's almost always put into deeds upon purchase is buyer beware. And, you know, that there is no representations, and they, and you take the lot, you take everything as is. And. It's, you can't, you can't claim ignorance to the law. When you're, when you're making, and we all, we've all been talking about huge expense here, you're purchasing a property and everything. That would sort of, would incite with me, and I think with reasonable people or objective-thinking people, that an investment of this magnitude requires, you know, substantial due diligence, you know, you know. To really eliminate, you know, really any possibilities that, that, you know, if you have a particular design in mind of what you want to do with the property. You know, you have to understand that, you know, considering the lot size here and the zoning code as it exists, that there are substantial risks in taking and, and making a purchase of this type. That's my opinion, but that's, you know, just my side of it. Having purchased properties in the past.
I think we all agree with what you just said, John.
Yeah.
I, I, I have to say, I purchased my property here because I fell in love where, where it was, it's overlooking the Hudson River. And it just so happens to be that the piece of property I bought was subdivided off of the father's property, and he gave it to his son as a wedding present, but he, they, they drew the southerly border line right up against the the, the, the south side of my southwestern point of my house. And what happened is, right along the lines of what you just spoke about, Donald. My neighbor passed away, of whom I was very good friends with, and the family came to me, and then that of it is, oh, I, I wasn't interested in buying the whole property, but I, I said, you know, to make my lot conforming. Could I purchase twenty yards or twenty feet out from my house? You know. Which would be more than the side yard setback would be necessary, and they agreed to it, and I made the purchase.
There you go.
And, and I did that with the thinking that, well, my house is only one and a half stories, and I may build up one day, and that would be a big zoning issue.
It's nine forty-five.
So I, you, you think things out, so what I did was almost like Sam Brode did, I bought with an understanding I had risk. And the house didn't sell right away, because, you know, it was a certain size, needed to go bigger. But I bought with the risk and the understanding that, heck, I'd have to buy new land, or I'd have to get substantial zoning variance. If I were to build up, so all those are just considerations that are taken when you just look at the reality of things, and you have to consider them. And it's like anything else, things are done, investment is done with risk in life, and the question of what risks are you willing to take?
It seems to me that of the five criteria, two of them weigh in favor of the application, and three of them weigh against the application. And of those three, two are strongly against, and that is the, the one about substantiality and the one about self-creation.
I agree with that assessment.
We talked, Eric, are you talking about this with, with no parking?
No, no.
With the, with the parking as.
Without, without parking.
Without parking.
I'm assuming, yeah, without parking. If, if we include parking on the lot, then I think. That would lessen the substantiality, I suppose, but it would increase detriment number two.
Right.
So it's kind of a wash in terms of the, the weighting.
And Eric, you're, in your assessment, it's that benefit, whether the benefit can be sought some other way, that's in favor of the applicant.
Yes, because there is no other, the applicant has no other way to, to turn, no other way to, to achieve this.
Yep, and then is it the adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions?
I'm assuming, and others may disagree, I, I was just assuming that, although there are some, some negative things were mentioned, I think overall, they didn't rise to the level of being a serious factor against the application.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree with your assessment.
Donald, what are your thoughts?
Well. I think that, that if you, if you, if you, if you keep the parking in, in other words, if you have parking spaces on the lot. That the substantiality goes, I agree, the substantiality goes down a little bit, but the, the.
Impact.
Undesirable changes and impacts to the neighbor, to the neighbor is, are so big that to me, they way outweigh the lesson substantiality. And I, I, personally, I would, I would go, no, I would just vote no, I, I, you know, and I would just say that, that the, that the. That those, the, the undesirable changes and effects to the, to the, the neighbors. Would just make my balancing where I would just say, I would have a no. I'm concerned, and I, and I know I'm talking to John, asking John first, and I know that we went over this early on. Are there ways that we can limit future development of a lot in terms of the house?
Um, I, I mean, you could limit the, the lot coverage. You know, the lot disturbance, you can't say. I mean, you can say that you can never come back for any future or further variances, but I don't know if that would necessarily be upheld. You know, I think everybody has a constitutional right to request the variance. But you can certainly make it a condition, and I'm not sure if it would necessarily stick, though.
Right.
And even if this applicant agrees to it, you know, the, the next property owner might be able to, to challenge it.
Yep. I guess in my mind, if I was going to approve this application without parking. I would be doing it to try to, to try to put to rest an issue which has been around for thirty five years, and has not been resolved, and is going to stay around, you know. I would be trying to fix a problem, which isn't going to go away unless somebody fixes it. And it's a dirty job, but somebody's got to do it, that, that's how, that's how I would be looking at this. That.
I guess I don't, I, I don't, I don't quite agree with that. I mean, I think another, you can imagine other features for this lot. One of them is that thirty-four Pine Street buys it, and then they make the lot whole. You know, I don't know if that, if they have, if they're interested in that, I don't know if either is, if one is interested in buying and one is interested in selling, but that, there are other. There may be other solutions that is not this one proposal. And. And it doesn't, and, and it also doesn't solve it, in what you said afterwards, that then, if something is built, then there is the possibility of future changes to the property that then bring this question up again. So I don't, I don't think this totally, it would certainly put this one issue to rest of making a decision that is supported by the applicant, but I don't think it solves everything. Or that is the only way to solve it.
Good point.
Are we at a position of voting, or is there, is there additional discussion needed?
You ready to vote, John?
Only if everybody else is ready to vote.
Are you ready to vote, Eric?
I have to admit, I still, I, I don't know, I still don't know.
Laura?
Um, I'll, I'll follow the group on this.
I'm in the I don't know. To, I'd love to just think this through a little bit before I voted. Part of me wants to be done with it, believe me, as we all do, I'm sure, but I, I think I want to. I want to, I want to, I want to go over what, think about what we've all talked about tonight, which has been very, very helpful. And, and, and go through the balancing for myself, and take everybody's comments into account. I think there were great comments and stuff that I hadn't thought about, and. Feel that I had given the decision time and consideration that it needs for myself.
I'm trying to establish the appropriate objective perspective, the appropriate distance by keeping in mind the response, the, the board's responsibility, we have different constituencies that we're supposed to serve. On the one hand, we're supposed to serve the applicant by enabling the applicants to do what they want with their own property whenever we can. And, and that's what the statute means when it says we have to, on one side, we have to weigh the benefit to the applicant. And they have, they have a right to achieve the benefit they want if they can. But, but the other constituencies are the neighbors, we have to, they have a right to assume that the ZBA will faithfully carry out the zoning code. The zoning code exists, it is law, and we're here to carry it out, or to ensure that it's carried out properly. And so, and, and they have a right to trust us to do that in a way that preserves their interests and doesn't, doesn't ignore them. So it's a very difficult balancing.
Third, I, just to say, I think that there's a third constituency too, which is the whole village over time, right? I mean, that's, that's why there is a code, is so that we don't, so that there isn't unrestrained growth. And so I, I think we're not, we're not just thinking of, a lot of these are worth thinking about the close neighbors, but it's, the purpose of this is, is is for the village to maintain itself in, in the state that we've, that we've decided is, is important to the village into the future. So that's yet another audience to balance, constituency to balance.
Well, I think what we should do is, we, we've gone over the elements, the criteria, the five statutory criteria, and I think that if we were to just adjourn this for, for further date. That we sort of, when we get back, just at least go over briefly what we discussed with regards to the five criteria, so we're not, you know, just as, just the way Donald went over the applicant's submissions throughout this, the few hearings that we had, I think it's important that we just recast what we discussed with regards to the five statutory elements, so we know where we left off. And, and, and we can say, you know, that nothing was missing, I took substantial notes on everything, but. What, is it, everybody agree with that, that we go over, you know, just briefly, have a brief discussion of what we.
I agree, I agree that if we. I'm tempted to ask John first to start to write something.
No, we have to do the voting.
Well, you, you've got two, there's two ways you can do this, I can, I can draft a decision. And then you guys can look at it and comment on it. And then vote on the decision. Or you can make a verbal vote, and each of you can express your opinions during, during the voting session. And then based upon your verbals, I can then draft up a written decision based upon everything that you've stated. And then you would adopt those written findings, you know, at your next meeting. So you, you can vote just verbally, and then follow it up with a written decision, or you can, you know, adopt the written decision that, you know, that, that, that night.
I guess what I was thinking, what it would be, it would be, when John says we should review the issues that we've just been talking about tonight. I agree, I wish we could get a, 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 like a, a good list of what we, what we, the issues that we talked about, or how we, you know what I'm saying? Not minutes, but a. Because two weeks, we, we have to do it, because two weeks from now, we'll forget.
Right, well, I mean, I was taking notes, so I could provide the board members some bullet points.
That would be very helpful.
That would be helpful, that, that, you know, provided, you know, obviously, the points came from us, and then we look them over, and that's fine, that's great.
We wouldn't be asking you to, to craft the decision one way or the other, rather more, you know, being a, being a, we're asking you to be a, the note taker, or, you know.
Right, I mean, honestly, sometimes some boards will, will ask, will instruct an attorney to prepare an approval and a denial. And then the board members will review it and decide which way to go. But I can provide the bullet points, because I think, I think there were points mentioned in favor of an approval, and I think there were also points, you know, obviously, mentioned in, in favor of a denial. So I think if I can synthesize those for you guys, and then that way you have it to chew on before the next meeting, and then you can make your verbal decision. For you guys, and then that way you have it to chew on before the next meeting, and then you can make your verbal decision. And then I'll follow it up with a written, I I think it should be in writing at the end of the day, no matter what you decide, it should be in writing.
I I would move that we have John do what he just said. I think that will be very helpful for all of us.
I second that. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, great, so when's your next meeting?
So we would go, uh, it would be two weeks from today, which would be when?
September third.
September third. Uh, is um, how's that for um?
That's okay. Thank you.
Okay, so I will get you guys something out. Probably next week, because I I'm I'm actually off that week, but um, I can, I can join in on a Zoom meeting if you need me.
Good, so we'll, um, we will, um, we will resume, we'll adjourn the meeting for tonight, and we will resume our deliberations on September third, seven thirty. Uh, I guess we're still in the Zoom world, and so presumably it would be Zoom. We'll be putting a, um, you know, we'll have Michael put up a link for in the agenda for what that would be.
Our second, our second motion to adjourn, sorry, John, go ahead.
No, go, go ahead.
No, seconding the motion to adjourn as long as he stated it, so is everybody in favor of that?
Hi.
Hi, okay.
Thank you very much, everybody, that was, that was very, very good, very helpful.
John was going to say something, John first?
Uh, the one thing is I don't have the um, I don't think I have the full packet.
Okay, I will have the uh, the village make you a package, I can email, well, I'll have them make, you want printed or do you want it in email?
Scan, scanning is fine.
Okay, we'll send you scans.
Right, okay.
Have that done.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good night, everybody.
Good night.